I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on January 7th, 2019, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims. Item E1, approval of gauge area growth and gauge claim in the amount of $42,545.09. Item E2, approval of balance of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $559,935.90. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $60,854.14. Item G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. Item H, approval of special designated license application of Community Players, Inc., for a fundraiser event to be held on March 9th, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Beatrice Community Players Theater, 412 Ella Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item I, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from Main Street Beatrice in the amount of $7,260 for Main Street to provide funding of $2,000 for the 2019 parking lot improvements, $4,420 for the trash receptacles, and $840 for the pet cleanup stations, as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board. Item J, approval of public funding request from Main Street Beatrice in the amount of $3,235 for downtown streetscape infrastructure additions and improvement projects. Item K, approval of public funding request from the Main Street Beatrice in the amount of $476.25 for the Chocolate Lover's Shopping Day Extravaganza Event. Item L, approval of public funding request from Main Street Beatrice in the amount of $1,386.50 for flowers and plants for downtown planters, plus city lot improvement projects. Item M, approval of public funding request from Main Street Beatrice in the amount of $280 for the preservation month and Mother's Day walking tour. Item N, approval of public funding request from Main Street in the amount of $868.75 for the Beatrice Farmers Market Event. Item O, Resolution Number 6343, executing the annual certification form for the Nebraska Department of Transportation for a period of October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item P, Resolution Number 6344, approving the preliminary P, S, and E package for NDRR project number ENH-3442, Control Number 13212 regarding installing a bicycle pedestrian trail from the water park to Hannibal Park. Item Q, Resolution Number 6345, executing the agreement between the City of Beatrice and JEO Consulting Group Incorporated to provide services to develop guidelines for an access management policy. Item R, Resolution Number 6346, granting permission to Derek Fraylin, doing business as Fraylin concessions, to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise upon the public parking lot at Hannibal Park and the Scott Street ballfields. Item S, Resolution Number 6347, appointing Jason Moore as the city's certified city street superintendent. Item T, Resolution Number 6348, appointing, reappointing Alan Fetty to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. Item U, Resolution Number 6349, reappointing Rita Haydo to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. Item V, Resolution Number 6350, reappointing Rick Mayfield of the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. Item W, Resolution Number 6351, reappointing Devin McGee to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. Item X, Resolution Number 6352, reappointing John Reha to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. And Item Y, Resolution Number 6353, reappointing Vaughn Wright to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any item that any council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Rick?
I would abstain on E1.
So noted. Ted?
Item G, item I, item P, item Q, item R.
Again, G, I.
P, Q, R.
Okay. Anyone else? Rich?
J, K, L, M, N.
J, K, L, M, N. Mr. Claybaugh, do you have all of that?
I hope so.
All right.
Mayor, I move that items listed under the consent agenda, with the exception of G, I, J, K, L, M, N, P, Q, R, be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that all items under the consent agenda be approved, with the exception of those that were noted earlier. Your vote, please. And that is approved 8 to 0. Who wants to start? Ted?
Well, we need a motion on the floor.
Beg your pardon.
I move that Item G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts be accepted and/or ratified as presented.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Cook, that we revisit Item G, approval of write-offs of ambulance bad debts. Ted?
I read the thing in the packet about it. But this is my question. So are we doing this on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, and annual basis for the write-offs?
Generally done about quarterly.
Okay. So does it change? The write-off is what Medicaid, Medicare doesn't pay, insurance companies doesn't pay. We're just writing off those that don't have insurance, or the remainder of what their insurance won't pay?
It's generally a little bit of all of that. So there are some where Medicaid, Medicare simply won't pay anymore, and so you just have to write it off. There are some where they are indigent and they don't have insurance or anything else, and so we technically write them off, we send those down to collections, and they work on those cases from there.
Okay. So, and I don't have a problem with any of that, or the... My question is, is do we need to have it on here that we can do this monthly, or not quarterly? I gotta think that if you did it on a month-to-month basis, whatever they had, if we're just turning them over to collections, if you just did it one time annually, said we're gonna write off the bad debts for the year, calendar year of 2019, this isn't ever a question, but it's just a paperwork question that I have. Can we just do it at one time for the whole year?
You could. I know that collection associates would prefer that we get the cases to them sooner, so they have an opportunity to go after.
Yeah, that's my point. I'd like to have it, I'd like to have them turned over weekly, but we don't have them meeting weekly. So what my question is, is can we have, in the month of February, have one resolution that says we're gonna turn over the bad debts for the remainder of 2019 from the ambulance department?
Let us check to see if we can do it that way.
Okay.
You just wanna streamline.
I wanna streamline. Well, and I wanna get, because we're gonna, they collect a portion of it, we get some of it. So if, I wanna get the money that we're going to get as quickly as we're going to get it.
We'll do some checking and get back.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved 8 to 0. Next item, Mr. Claybaugh?
Mayor, I move that Item I, approval of Beatrice Plus funding request from Main Street Beatrice in the amount of $7,260 for Main Street Beatrice to provide funding of $2,000 for the 2019 parking lot improvements, $4,420 for the trash receptacles, and $840 for the pet cleanup stations, as recommended by the Beatrice Plus Advisory Board, be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that we further discuss Item I.
That's me.
Okay, Ted?
I didn't pull them all off, like Councilman Kurt did, like Rich did, for the remainder of them. I just, because I wanted to discuss their, I don't have a problem with this, per se. What my question is, is I have a problem with their funding mechanism. In the past, during past administrations, we had a block of funds that we simply gave Main Street out of the general fund, and I don't remember exactly what that dollar amount was, $15,000, $20,000, $30,000, whatever it was.
Thirty.
Thirty? That'd been my guess. I was gonna guess 25 to 30, but I wasn't sure. And I, if you look at what Main, the Main Street organization does for the community, they are probably the only outside entity that is fulfilling our city's comprehensive plan. They check a lot of boxes out of what we have in our comprehensive plan, things that we wanna get done. So back to the streamlined thing, I would, I don't have a problem with this, and I'm not gonna vote against it. What I would like to do is look at what we have given them from the general fund, Beatrice Plus funds, in-kind services, whatever it is, over the last two calendar years, and put that in a line item in the budget to just give it to them at one time. I'd still like to have a report, quarterly or annually, that is similar to what we get from Engage. This is how we're spending your money, this is what we're doing, these are the boxes we're checking. But this accomplishes two things. So streamline it, and it also frees up these other funds that Main Street is accessing, the Beatrice Plus funds. I look at these things, and I think that they should be used for artwork along the trails, trees, flowers, those kind of things, things that we don't, you know, that different organizations, I'm not saying it's not a good use of these funds, I'm just saying I'd like to see that come out of the general fund, because they're working hand-in-hand with us, and free those funds up for somebody else. But I don't have a problem with this, and I'm not gonna vote against it.
Okay. Rick?
I had visited, I think it was in the meeting, I asked Tobias about this, on if we could just do just exactly what Ted had talked about, and you felt it was better and much more transparent if we continue to do it this way. Do you wanna explain yourself on?
Right. So in the past, when we just gave Main Street $24,000, $30,000, whatever it was, one of the issues we had was about accountability. There are certain things state law says that Main Street then has to spend their money on in order for us to legally give them money.
Yep.
In the past, the city did not do the best of jobs, going back and making sure that money was spent appropriately on Main Street's side. So there's where we got into some of the issues before. I think this way we have it set up now, I think, has worked well. Yes, it does mean Main Street has to come back and ask for particular projects, but that's one of the issues we had in the past with going just the...
Well, Tobias, I don't have a problem with them coming back. It's just the funding mechanism. They, I'd like to see their funds come out of the general fund. I don't have a problem with them asking. But, and I, and I get it, but I think that it's more a fault of ours, of this body, of this entity not following up. It wasn't a fault of theirs, and I'd just like to see it go back to the other way. I know it's actually not part of this discussion, but it certainly is a money trail from there. So if that's what we need to do to discuss it, then we need to put it on a future agenda, because I'd sure like to see it go back the other way.
Yeah, we can further discuss it. Sure. Rich?
I was also gonna pull I before Ted did. I'd like some explanations on a couple of things. Michael?
Do we, are you gonna move down the agenda, Rich? Because I, we need to vote on the one that I pulled off, and then you can...
I wanna talk about I.
Oh, same one? Okay.
Okay. Michael? Michael Sothen, Director of Main Street. What would you, what's your question?
The trash cans.
Yes, sir.
We pulled trash cans off of the old light fixtures. What happened to those?
So we've, some of them are in really bad shape from talking with Pat. They're electric department hands, some of them have rusted out and are no longer usable. A few of them are still usable. I think he says around eight or nine of those baskets are still in usable shape. There's actually a community group that's putting together proposals to ask for some different trail improvements and some other things, and they would like to see those located at some key points that are accessible by vehicle to help maintain trash along the trails. And so that's...
That will be used.
Yes.
Okay. The bike racks, do we have that much bike traffic downtown?
This is definitely a great, great question. Right now, in the city of Beatrice, of course, we've been investing a lot, and even later here on your agenda, the city has been investing a lot into trails, and nationwide, there has been a lot more investment into bike infrastructure, and the reason for that is kind of multi-pronged, and the way that we're looking at this right now is, one, we see it as a potential way for this community to make more money, with the Standing Bear Trail now being completed in downtown, the Homestead Trail. There's a lot more people looking at Beatrice for bicycle tourism. One of the things that a lot of those people want to be able to do, because a lot of them have pretty nice bikes, is they would like to be able to go someplace, go grab something to eat, go grab something to drink, but they wanna be able to lock up their bike. They're not gonna just leave their bike sitting on the sidewalk, or down by the trail, or anything like that. They wanna be able to have a place to secure their bike. And so as part of that, and trying to stay ahead of that demand, instead of them come riding down from Lincoln, or getting, you know, driving down here and trying to use our community, and my wife there at the Gage County Stork Society has seen lots of people using the trail, even here during the winter time, the one thing that they are asking for, or that they're gonna be looking for, is things like bike racks. How welcoming are we to bicyclists? Because right now, she had a large group of about 15 people that went to the museum. They were going to go through the museum, but since she had no bike racks, they chose to just wait and wait for their ride to pick them up. They did not enter the museum, because there was no bike rack for them to lock their bike up at.
Wouldn't that be up to the museum to...
And it would. And so I was gonna say, if you look, something that we have added since our first thing to you guys, and I try to provide you all with it, is a map. So on the page, the, on the backside of the page, it's some pictures of some different bike racks, is actually a little bit of a map. And we are talking with some folks about privately purchasing theirs. The museum is looking at doing so. But as far as the ones that are actually gonna be on the public sidewalk, we are seeking your guys' help to be able to make that happen. We're definitely gonna be paying a portion of it, but those that are in the public right-of-way and are in the public sphere, we would like assistance and being able to see that happen. This Beatrice Plus application, the Beatrice Plus was wanting to fund some of our other projects at a higher level, and reduce the funding on the bicycle end, saying that make those other trash cans and the pet stations a top priority, and then with whatever funds that might be remaining, to try to support bike racks, is the way I understood it. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I would agree with you. Main Street, or, excuse me, Beatrice Plus had the same conversation at their board meeting Tuesday morning, and if you look at what was applied for and what was approved for funding, Beatrice Plus is not recommending any funding going to bike racks at this time. All the funding goes to the pet cleanup stations, the parking lot improvements, and the trash receptacles.
So reduction of about $2,000.
You've got $4,420 for the trash receptacles, and $840 for pet cleanup stations. What's the $2,000 for?
The $2,000? Well, that's for the parking lots.
$2,000 in parking lots. What does that mean?
So, well, first, do you want me to finish answering your question about the bike racks? Okay. And then we'll go to the parking lots. So on this map, we actually are now proposing potentially a few more bike racks, mainly because we were thinking of a little larger bike rack that was gonna be more artistic in style. We're actually going to be going down to a much smaller bike rack. It's essentially, without a better term, it's gonna be, what we're right now considering is a hitching post style. So essentially, it's a Ballard style, exactly like what you just pointed out in your picture there. And so these are only designed to hold for two bikes, and so it's going to be able to hold much less bikes, but because they're smaller, we can spread them out and put them in more key locations. Mainly, we're trying to put them in locations close to restaurants, places that you can go get a drink. We've seen a high demand at some of the thrift stores, because besides those people that are looking at using this for bicycle tourism, we also have a significant part of our population that truly are using bikes as their main mode of transportation. I know with me living west of town, I see a lot of people riding to get to work and back on West Court. We also see a lot of youth, you know, people that are before they turn 16, there's a lot of youth that, that's how they get around. And so one of the things about bike racks is it's just one step to try to be ahead of the demand, and try to meet some of the current demand that's already there, and just really more being proactive about our bicycle infrastructure, and also trying to make it more welcoming, and really saying that, hey, we do want bikes, we do want people that are on bikes to feel welcome to spend their money here in our community and spend some time in our downtown. So that's the part about the bike racks. And so we are scaling back our project. It's actually gonna result in more numbers of bike racks, but they're gonna be much smaller and holding less numbers of bikes. We had a wonderful bid come in from a company called Sightscapes that we will be looking at, and also Circle D Manufacturing in Wyomar, but their bids actually came in below some of the others that we had received earlier, so it'll actually allow us to do maybe a little bit more than we had originally thought of. But then, yes, in regards to the parking lot improvements in that application, and also in this updated packet I gave you guys, the parking lots are two city-owned parking lots. One is down by Jim's Carpet, there on the 300s block, and the other one is over on the 700s block by Wells Fargo, and I've got it here in that updated packet that I gave you. Those two parking lots are both owned by the city. The one by Jim's Carpet, until about a month ago, was filled with rock that during the summer would get filled with weeds. It still had the old rusty parking meter poles were still sitting in that, and overall, the appearance of the parking lot was pretty sad. And this is something that was actually a part of the Main Street streetscape plan back in 1998 to get cleaned up. It hasn't gotten done, and so Main Street wanted to put some of our funding into helping see this project happen. There's no doubt that with our funding request and the city's in-kind labor, that the city, through these funding mechanisms, would be taking on the bulk of it. But here over the winter time, Mark Pethod and some of the other guys have gotten out there, they've already cleaned out the center there, and are got it prepped, they've put in some new lights, and are really gonna be able to make this, this parking lot not be an eyesore, but hopefully actually look decent. Same with the other one over at, by Wells Fargo Advisors, that city-owned parking lot, that one's gonna be a little bit larger, because it's actually concrete capped, but with all that concrete, again, it adds to just the concrete jungle, and we're trying to alleviate that. And so they're gonna be ripping out the concrete in the center of that median, the one closest to Court Street, prepping that with new dirt, and we will be funding the plants and trees going into that project. And so those are two projects. One, we had hoped to have completed last year, but city departments ran out of time to be able to complete it, and so that's why we're trying to take on two projects this year on the parking lots.
Nice job. Then the $840 for pet cleanup stations?
Yeah. So on the page, on the page before the parking lot, we're looking at pet cleanup stations. We've been having some requests from people that are living downtown, and folks that are enjoying Charles Park, that there's an issue of people not cleaning up after their pets. One of the excuses that we hear from people is just that they forget to bring a bag, and there's nothing there for it. So our idea is that, and it's not just Charles Park, we've definitely heard about it in the trails downtown and other things, it has been less of an issue with the Humane Society relocating, but it's still an issue, and especially as we're starting to see more people living downtown, with having a few people investing in downtown apartments, which is something we want to encourage. Again, it's trying to be proactive, trying to be welcoming, and so trying to locate two pet cleanup stations on both ends, the, I guess, Fifth Street end and on the Sixth Street end of Charles Park. There, essentially, as the picture's here, it's a dispenser, a bag dispenser. We actually are gonna elect to remove the trash can off of the bag dispenser, because there's already three trash cans in Charles Park, so we figured why spend extra money on another trash can on a bag dispenser? But it'd just be a poll with a little bag dispenser and a sign that says, you know, please help us clean up after your pet, keep our park clean, those types of wording, and hopefully provide service that keeps our park, that I know both the city and Main Street have put a lot of money into making nice.
Other comments? Did you have something, Peter?
Well, just maybe to clarify, maybe something what Teddy was on to earlier. Toby, don't we, if I'm thinking back on Main Street, let's say the city right up front allocated them 20 or 30, whatever, that really can't be used for their day-to-day operation, can it?
Correct.
It has to be, and I think that's one of the reasons I think we went to that format that showed exactly where those funds were going.
Correct.
So, just for a little clarification.
I will say this, that here over the, kind of over the beginning of the year here in January, our board has been discussing our future budgets as Main Street Beatrice, and, you know, we've just been evaluating some of our future projects, and so, yes, if you guys do wanna have a conversation about that, I know some in our board would like to continue that conversation, you know, later this, sometime this spring, or something like that.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone from the public? I'll write your vote, please. That is approved 8 to 0. Next is Item J.
Mayor, I move that Item J, approval of public funding request from Main Street Beatrice in the amount of $3,235 for downtown streetscape infrastructure additions and improvement projects be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second. Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, and we further discuss Item J.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd just go through J and N, and we could get it all over with it.
Well, we need a motion for N also.
If you guys would like to do that, then you could take one vote on it all. I've just got a few questions I want him to answer, is that okay, Toby?
Under Roberts' rule, since it's your motion, we'd have to ask you if you're okay with making the motion read to approve Items J, K, L, M, and N.
I'm fine with that, sir.
And then we'd have to ask Mr. Morgan.
Is that okay with your...
If you're okay with that.
All right, sir.
Just to get it to moving along.
There we go. So now your motion will read to approve J, K, L, M, and N.
Mayor, I move that we have to do...
Nope, you don't need to do it again?
Okay.
Nope, you're good.
Mr. Kerr?
I'm just trying to move it along a little bit. J, what is that for?
Okay. So J is largely what we were just talking about with the Beatrice Plus, but as far as for us to try to do some of these public improvements to some of these city-owned areas, we are seeking both funding through Beatrice Plus, which Beatrice Plus has typically told us they do not wanna fund more than 50% of our projects, and then also seeking 25% matching funds through the City of Beatrice funding policy, with Main Street contributing 25%.
Okay. And the reasons I pulled all of them off was just to get a final total of what we're looking here through this, and on N, $868.75 for the Beatrice market. Do those folks down there not pay for their booths?
Yeah.
They pay rent?
So, so the vendors do.
Then why are we paying $868 every year? Shouldn't that take care of itself?
Let him answer the question.
So, so, yes, the vendors do pay a vendor fee. I guess, you know, to answer your question, we do ask for the city's support, you know, for this, about $800 annually for the farmers market, as a way to really, I guess, highlight and to support a, I guess, a community aspect. You know, when we look around at other communities, there's a lot of communities that truly are trying to promote their farmers markets, because it is local product, it's local people. Oftentimes, I know something that is allowed us to do is we actually have a youth farmers' market vendor program that we're able to give really almost a very basic, a very minimal rate to some youth vendors to be able to come, so those young people that are still in school, that are wanting to grow products, allows us to do that, and honestly, it just helps us get the word out that we do have a farmers market above and beyond what the vendors' fees are. We could always try to charge those vendors more, but then we would definitely see a lot less. You know, we have a lot of people in this community that just wanna come out and be a hobby vendor, and I guess it kind of allows us to be able to have a classification for those folks.
So the $868 is spent for what?
Mainly marketing. So it's used on newspaper, radio marketing. Mainly marketing, so it's used on newspaper, radio marketing, a little bit of social media. When we need to have new signage, when we have, if you've seen the little sandwich board signs that go out, it helps provide those. We don't have to buy those every year, but every couple of years, we have to refresh those.
Well, like I said, I was going to pull I off and all through those. And the reason I did is, 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 this is thirteen thousand five hundred and six dollars and fifty cents. Thirteen thousand dollars. Most, a lot of this is coming out of Beatrice Plus, which means you guys, Main Street is pulling a lot of Beatrice Plus money out. That limits other organizations from being able to use that Beatrice Plus money. I think Ted was hitting on that. And I would like to see some, some other funding mechanism just like Ted, and that's why I pulled it off, to where some of these other organizations, like the footballs and some of these other ones, can use that money also. But it is being mainly taken, taken and used by Main Street, which I have not a problem. But these other, these other organizations are not getting it used. And another thing, and it happened a couple of weeks ago, that's kind of torqued me, is we're expending a lot of money through three entities in this city, and as I drove to pick Petey up today, I noticed all the downtown storefronts. I thought these entities were supposed to be bringing businesses and manufacturing into this town, and it's not happening, and we just keep pulling money into this. And I'm getting very, very upset about this. Three of our biggest storefronts have been open for years.
Okay, let's don't get off the subject here, Rich, okay?
I'm not getting off the subject.
Well.
That's their main deal, they're supposed to be bringing businesses and manufacturing into this town.
And if I, if I can say something here, is one thing is when we did lose that city funding, this was said, this was kind of going to be a mechanism for us to try to recoup some of that, so that way we could still keep doing what you just were saying. Why aren't we doing more to help with things downtown? Frankly, you know, right now, we're trying to chip away at some of these promotional events, some of them are to try to bring extra business and try to highlight the businesses that we have and create opportunities for new businesses. Some of this is to make our downtown and our community more open to people to come here. But frankly, yes, these applications and most of those Beatrice Plus funds, the majority over ten thousand dollars of this, is making improvements to city-owned areas and city-owned properties that we are putting our money into trying to help with. And hopefully, as a result, it does help us fill some of these locations. But frankly, yes, as a nonprofit organization, when we rely on fundraising and on little things like this to make up the bulk of our budget, it does limit the time that we can spend on doing some of those larger efforts.
Thirteen thousand five hundred dollars is not little things.
Yes, but most of those are, these are not things that are going into helping us do the things that you just talked about. In a way, they do because they are improving the community, but they are not helping us go out and try to talk with folks or to make physical improvements to properties. It is making an improvement to our community, which is well-needed, but these are not, if you're, you know, what you're asking about is, in a lot of ways, in a little bit different sphere than what these are. And unfortunately, this is the mechanism that's given to us to be able to try to cover some of our expenses, to cover some of the time that's needed to actually do those much larger things that you're talking about. I agree with you, I wish I could spend much more of our time trying to tackle those challenges, and I think we have. I think that Beatrice should be proud of some of the things that have happened. Just last year in 2018, three million dollars were spent on downtown building and public improvements. That's the most money that's been spent on building improvements in a long time. The challenge with a lot of the properties that you're referring to is that they are not turnkey-ready, they are not ready for someone to come into. And until we can change some of that, we are going to have that challenge. And we've seen over the last about three years, over twenty new businesses in addition to, above a net gain of almost twenty businesses above what we've lost in downtown area. And we've seen almost eighty new jobs in the downtown area since 2016. And so, I definitely do feel like we have been seeing some success. We still have a lot of challenges, we have a lot of work in front of us, but we have been seeing that success.
I think it also, just a minute, Rich, I think it also should be noted that there was two applications. Main Street's and the other applicant did not show up for the Main Street meeting. So, not the Main Street meeting, but the Beatrice Plus meeting. If the applications don't come in, these dollars are going to be spent somewhere. The Beatrice Plus group unanimously approved going forward with these different requests from Main Street. Any other questions or comments? Your vote, please, gentlemen. That is approved. That is approved, seven in favor, and Rich Kerr voting against.
Mayor, I move that item P, resolution number six three four four, approving the preliminary PS and E package for NDR, project number ENH dash thirty-four forty-two, control number one three two one two, regarding installing a bicycle pedestrian trail for the water park to Hannibal Park, be approved, accepted, and eradified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billzbach, that we further discuss item P. Who pulled this?
I did.
Ted?
I don't have a problem with it, I read the information in the packet, we got a brief email about it from Tobias earlier in the week. I just pulled it off so we, so I can find out really what's going on. I don't think that, I'd like to have an understanding of the starting, the start, where we started on this and what I think are, where we're going to end on this.
So, this project started with a grant application in 2011.
Yep.
I believe it was eleven. Transportation enhancement funds is what you've got, those generally take a number of years. The other project you did was Second Street from Court to Ella, same set of funds.
So the enhancement funds, do they go away?
No.
Okay.
The state of Nebraska has taken over, they are in charge of this project, so they're handling all the paperwork. The thing that takes the longest is you have to do NEPA documents, otherwise, those are essentially your environmental review documents. Those take quite a while to get completed. The state told us earlier, oh, six, eight, nine months ago, they were hopeful for a bid letting in February of nineteen, construction in late summer of nineteen. We always figured it was much more likely to occur with a bid letting in the fall of nineteen, is what we'd always anticipated with construction in summer of 2020. Just this week, we got a, or I guess it was last week, I got a call from Department of Transportation, they are acquiescent to that, and they have acknowledged it will be a fall bid letting of nineteen with construction in summer of 2020.
But just the one construction season?
It's a hundred and five construction days, I believe is what the contract calls for.
Right.
The other issue you have run into is you have to make sure that you don't bother the migratory birds. If there are any migratory birds that are nested in any tree along the trail, you cannot disturb that area until the birds have grown and flown away from the nest. So, we talked about us going out and topping some of the trees, because you can only cut the trees during certain time periods, and doing that beforehand, but due to the bid getting pushed back until fall, you probably shouldn't have an issue this year, next year. If they get in and work right away, hopefully that project, that will be done before the nesting season starts, and that won't be an issue either.
Okay.
But right now, they're in right-of-way acquisition is where they're at, so they have to talk to all the property owners from the water park to Hannibal Park and acquire either easements or actual property. That is all handled by Department of Transportation. We are not allowed to go contact any of those property owners to acquire, try to acquire it ourselves.
Yep, I'm aware of that.
So, the first thing they have to do is send out an offer, those people then have thirty days to think about the offer, and then negotiation starts after that. So, as of today, a couple of property owners I know along the trail had not gotten their offer yet, so.
Okay, that was my next question, have any of them gotten an offer?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions, Ted?
Nope.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. That is approved eight zero.
Mayor, I move that item Q, resolution number six three four five, executing the agreement between the City of Beatrice and JEO Consulting Group, Inc., to provide services to develop guidelines for an access management policy, be approved, accepted, and eradified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Cook, that we further discuss item Q.
I pulled it off. I just don't know what this is.
So, an access management policy is something the City of Lincoln has, bigger cities have it. One of the things that we don't have is, right now, there's nothing in our rules to say how big essentially your driveway can be, how wide it can be on the street. And so, we allow driveways up to, if you have a fifty-foot lot, you can have driveway up to as much as forty feet in some places. We just feel that's too much, it provides too much area where cars can come on and off and interact with traffic. Mostly what you see in Lincoln is they narrow that down to a twenty-foot driveway. Outside your property, then you can flare the driveway back out and have it bigger, but on your, access onto your road is something smaller. And so, what we want to do is hire JEO to come down and review those, what makes sense for Beatrice, what types of rules should we implement here, and hopefully adopt some type of policy moving towards access management.
All right, are we, is this something that we're going to have before, are we going to have contact with them, or is it just going to be with city administration?
Initially, we were just going to have a city administration, if you'd like to have involved here, we certainly can, but.
In the, in the last week, I had, I was contacted by somebody who had a question about driveways and how they access on the roadway, how they access through, past the sidewalk, as long as I get an opportunity to pass that along and you can feed that information in, that's fine. I just want to make sure that the person that contacted me gets heard.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Any other questions from the audience? Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Last, item R.
Mayor, I move that item R, resolution number six three four six, granting permission to Derek Freeland doing business as Freeland Concessions to sell or offer for sale or peddled goods, wares, or merchandise upon the public parking lot of Hannibal Park and the Scott Street ball fields.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Fairbanks, that we further discuss item R.
I pulled this off, my only question is this is, can, since we have a two-year annual budget, we are, our budget's two years, can we have this, these types of contracts be for two years instead of one year?
There's nothing says you can't do that, we've always limited it to a year in case you ever had an issue with any of the dealers that you wanted to address, I gave you an opportunity to address it more quickly.
We've got a thirty-day out or ten-day out with these contracts, don't we?
No, these contracts are simply you granting permission to be on their property, there's no actual signed contract, other than you just allowing them to show up and sell on the ball fields.
All right. That was the only question I had.
Anyone else from the audience? Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. All right, we have no public hearings, bids, resolutions, or ordinances. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. The public forum is for the purpose, the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Does anyone have anything for the public forum from the council? Ted?
Dan, I've got a question for the work session, next work session we have. The three things that I get asked about continually are Stirkcraft property, Dempster's property, and the Toast property. Like, and I had somebody question me about it, said that on one of your Ask the Mayor programs, your plan was to have this, at least the Dempster's property cleaned up in the next two years. I had no answer for that. Can we get those three properties on a work session agenda so we can discuss it, see where we're at, where we're going? Okay.
Be great.
That'd be great, thanks.
All right. Next is discussion, city administrator's monthly report.
Again, you have the report there, a couple of highlights, we talked about the trail already, if you have not been out to Hannibal Park, the indoor heating facility has been completed, stop out there sometime, you can take a look, it's busy most every night, so feel free to stop in and look around for a little bit. A couple of projects that are coming up next year, one of them is Sergeant Street from Ridgeview to Ashland Avenue up in Industrial Park, that's been on our one-six-year street plan, we are starting to prepare plans, so we can go out for bid on that here sometime during the winter months. Part of that will probably result in the electric department and the water department moving some projects around and doing their work at the same time while that area's torn up. So you may see some jostling of projects from those departments to coincide with that work being done there at the same time. Other than that, happy to answer any questions you might have in the package.
Anyone? Questions from Tobias? Let's move into legislative update.
Just to update you, in case you didn't know, the session has started, if you'd like a paper copy, there's a paper copy for you. As always, we kind of update you on a few legislative bills that are out there. A couple of things worth noting on the city side is remote seller sales tax. I know there's at least three bills that have been introduced regarding this topic. The short version of that is online sales tax. As you know, the rule in, at least in Nebraska, has been that if you didn't actually have a physical presence here, you did not have to charge sales tax for online purchases. However, companies like Amazon changed their policy here not too long ago, they've started collecting it. So now the state is looking to implement this for everybody after a recent Supreme Court decision. So there are a number of bills introduced. I'd be honest, I don't know the finite details of each one of those bills and how they're all different, but that's the general dress of each bill is that they allow the city to start collecting online sales tax for those. LB-85 is another one, it doesn't impact Beatrice because it only deals with Omaha and Lincoln, but it is something we've talked about on our strategic plan, that being rental housing inspections. So curious to see how that goes in Lincoln and Omaha, if they move this thing forward, you know, what types of things are they look to inspect, how does the rental community handle it? Might be a good kind of ability for us to watch and see how it works before we would look to tackle that here in Beatrice, which is part of our strategic plan. And then LB-216 is one that we are watching, that is, has to do with prohibiting the releasing of people in custody to avoid medical costs. The rule today is that if an individual is considered to be in custody, doesn't actually mean handcuffed, but in custody, so if they're fleeing from the scene, right, and the cops are chasing them, they're technically in custody. If they have a medical issue, you're on the hook for their medical bills. If some of you have been on the council long enough, remember back in 2005, six, seven, somewhere in there, there was a gentleman who decided to leave the City of Beatrice, we gave chase, county sheriffs gave chase, Jefferson County gave chase, he crashed just over the Jefferson County line, he ended up having to get lifelighted to Lincoln. Each one of us ate part of that medical bill, because he technically was in custody at the time. So, that's something I know the police department struggles with every day, knowing that they don't want to strap our taxpayers with those medical bills, and so there's a fine line there. This bill would essentially not allow us to release people who maybe were in custody, now you're going to let them go in order to avoid medical costs, so. It is an issue that we wrestle with daily, police department does a great job dealing with it on a day-in, day-out basis, knowing sometimes when it's best to maybe let somebody go versus making sure they're in custody at that time to avoid some medical bills. Other than that, there's a number of them on here, we won't bore you by going through all of them, but, yeah.
390, it says they're requiring a memorandum of understanding and training for school resource officers. Does our school resource officer, do we have to have an MOU?
We have an MOU with the school already for our school resource officer, and our school resource officers do go through training, so I'm not sure it would impact our life a lot, but it's something that's out there, and we'll have to get through the details to know exactly what might change for us.
I just, I just noticed that as I was going through, I didn't know if we did that or not.
Tobias, 324, the 911 services, will that affect us?
It might, but what it does is it eliminates liability for agencies and employees who use next-generation 911 services, and so, if anything, it would help us out by eliminating that liability that employees would have. I think there would be a struggle to find some liability there, but it's possible.
And 386, we already do that, correct? The cash reserves amount?
We do, what it changes is, the current rule is that you're going to have fifty percent of what you have budgeted in cash reserves, it changes to fifty percent of what your personal property taxation is. So, it, I guess in theory would lower the amount of cash reserves you could have, I don't know that it would impact us. It would, we'd have to go through and look to see, because you do also have sales tax dollars and some of those things that come in.
They're not, they're just looking at property, they're not looking at revenue?
No, yeah, there's just simply what you can tax and how much, capsule, how much cash reserves you can have.
Okay.
And does that impact utility sides? That was excluded.
It does not?
No.
Okay.
No, priority funds.
All right.
Any other questions of Tobias? All right, with that said, our next city council meeting is going to be Monday, January 21st, in these chambers, and then we're going to have a work session. 21st, in these chambers, and then we're going to have a work session on January 28th. Now I'd recommend that we go into executive session, Mr. Claybaugh.
Mayor, I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at 7:49 for the protection of public interest.
Okay.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by?
Second.
E. By Mike.
Catlin.
By Mr. Catlin, all of you guys. Vote, please, that is approved eight zero.